Yep.
I didn't see that.
Hi, everybody.
Yeah. Oh, hey.
How are you all?
Sure. In.
Not really.
Meeting to order at seven oh six. We reviewed the review, the minutes from August first. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes as amended? We.
What happened to the minutes from the seventeenth?
Seventeenth of what? July?
Yeah, it was, was it July? Eighteenth.
July eighteenth? I don't have. That.
We can send it through.
I would like that. I don't think they were ever approved. And I never voted on.
We'll check.
Well, what we're talking about. That. A void request.
Okay. Let's get this thing going first. I have a letter from Tom Ward. And he's resigning for, from the chairmanship of Aging in Place. And I think there's another board he was on.
Must be C.
Aging in Place Committee. I guess that's the only one. But do I have a motion to accept his resignation? At a. So move anybody? I'll second that. Uh, yeah, with regret. I will send a letter off. I didn't get a hold of that. Pat Rosson has a candidate for the health officer. And this person would also do the rescue meetings. But I didn't call it tonight. I will get in touch with her and find out who it is and then see if I can get her any next minute meeting. Next item is the Travis Mills Foundation. They've been redoing some of the old properties. And one of them is the one right at the corner of the Castle Island and Watson Pond Road. And across from the Castle Island Road is a another building that they're putting in. And so they want to be able to cross that street with golf carts. Also pedestrians, but they can't get a cross, a normal crosswalk. That's they've tried it. And the reason why they have a golf cart crossing down the road a piece is the same reason that they're going for a golf cart crossing at this point. But they would like to have their permission, our permission, permission from the selectmen to put a golf cart crossing at six forty seven Castle Island Road. You understand what I'm proposing?
Wouldn't that be all under the jurisdiction of the state?
Yeah. They, they simply need the okay from the selectmen. And then they will go to the DOT and the DOT will say, okay.
I thought the planning board had to review it.
No, there's, there's no ordinances in town to cover it. So we can't ask the code enforcement office to do it because there's no ordinance. So the last time they went to the plan, uh, selectmen to get the okay.
So the other thing that I would say is that road splits in the middle. Rome is on half or half of the road and Malvern is the other.
Not, not at that point because remember it was Leroy's. The front part of the house was in that six forty seven is a Malvern address. So that portion is Malvern.
So it's from the house, not from the parking lot.
Correct. Right.
Because I know the parking lot, it's not from.
Right. Right.
I have a concern.
Yep.
As a citizen. Because I travel that road a lot. And there actually is a rush hour on the Belgrade Road through Castle Island. It's not a big one, but when you come around that corner and turn onto Castle Island, it, there's not a lot of visibility. So it, you're not going to have a lot of leave time to see pedestrians or golf carts crossing. And that's a bit of a concern if they do it too close there.
I think they have a light.
Sign on Belgrade.
Yeah.
Warning you.
I got a feeling the state will want a, they'll need a certain amount of feet.
Right.
They have to have a site just for the safety.
Right.
Yeah, away from the corner.
It's two hundred, two hundred and fifty feet or a drive, commercial driveway.
Because if I'm, if I think about that corner and I go around, it's like golf cart. And even if they have a sign.
Right.
But it needs to be further down. So you actually turned and you can see.
Yeah, if you, if you look at the property, there's a driveway on the opposite side of the road right there. And that's where that crossing would be.
It's where they just put that parking lot in.
What's that?
That's where they just put the parking.
Yeah. 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 And that's where their office is going to be. They're moving their office from Manchester up to Melbourne.
But the parking lot is closer, it's almost at the corner.
No, no, well, that's, that's the, the brand new paint part of the lot. The one they're talking about was by the civilian, I believe, across the street.
Right.
Back in the woods.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
But that's what I'm saying. If they put it there, that's where it's in Rome. Because that old portion of that building that sits back in, that they used to use as the old laundry.
Yeah.
That is Rome.
No, what I'm talking about is across the street from Leroy's.
Right, but you're going from one side of the street to the other.
Right.
Rome has part of that road is Rome's, part of the road is Malvern.
Right.
So I would think it would fall under the state's jurisdiction to make a determination if that can be moved. Even if they have your commission, I mean, that's, that's.
Right. That's, it's personally, it's the state's going to be the one that basically I, I would move that we accept the accept Travis Mills Foundation's
Request.
Request for a golf cart crossing at six forty seven Castle Island Road.
I'll second if Carl hasn't.
I was still here. Yeah. Vote. Three.
Can't vote if you're, if it's on Zoom.
But she can.
You can, Alice.
Oh, you can?
Yeah. Yeah, they just changed the law.
Oh, did they?
It was specifically for COVID, so.
Okay.
I will contact the Travis Mills people.
It's, this is being recorded, right?
Recorded?
Yeah.
Yes.
The meeting.
Right, it is. Oh.
Recording in progress.
It is now.
Oh. Oh, well, I was saying that. I can go right back to this. I've contacted main municipal and both my questions were answered. May is select board member also served on, I said broadband committee or town manager, search committee. Can a husband of a select board member serve on the budget committee? Both these committees were formed many years ago by previous select boards. Okay, that, that was answered by the MMA attorney says, yes. Their advisory committees and don't have any effect on decisions.
So you can be, we can now be a congressperson and a senator too, I guess.
No.
Yeah. That's basically what you're telling us.
No, what, what a select board member can't be on is a planning board. It can't be a clerk.
Planning thing, though. You're planning future money for the town. It's four million dollars. It's more money than you've ever spent in this town before.
It's still got to be voted by the voters. It's not.
And it's, and it's in the MMA book and I'd be happy to show it to you if you want me to dig it out.
We, we got this.
It's biased and it's also.
An attorney, so.
So who is the attorney?
Yeah, the attorney from.
Our attorney.
Well, I'll get it. I'll get it for you. I'll get it.
I think it would be in the, in the interest of the selectmen if people would, if, if the members were abstaining from those votes. I, I think it only serves the public more generously that way.
Another question that came up was select board meetings that are televised on Channel Seven or are on YouTube. Should they not be available on a particular night? Would this cause the meeting to not be held? Okay, this, this brings up a whole bunch of things. Select board meetings do not have to be minutes do not have to be taken. Agendas do not have to be posted. They don't even have to be exist. I'm, I'm reading right from the book.
Okay.
They do not have to be televised. And they don't have to be on YouTube, so.
So you guys can sit, you might just as well call executive session every meeting and then just run this town like it's your own. This came from the attorney? This comes from the attorney?
This right in the municipal offices, man.
So this didn't come from the attorney?
It did come from the attorney too, but I got it right from the municipal offices, man. But as long as I've known this office from being treasurer and selectman and everything, minutes has always been taken, so.
It's been recorded. I guess that he had five, six years ago was when Paul had to stop the meeting because they didn't, at that time it was probably longer than that because they didn't have the tape before taping the meetings. Meeting had to be taped in full, not minutes taken, but taped in full. And I, and I can go to the common gray and the same thing. They had that big, they had a big uproar about that where all of the, all of the.
Okay. Now, let me clarify that. All what I just said goes away if you have a charter that requires minutes, that requires agendas, that requires all that.
So we do have a charter.
That's not a charter.
It is a charter. It was when our town was formed. That's a charter.
No.
Whether, whether you want to, believe it or not, it is a charter.
I, I've always said that exact same thing, but it was a charter sets up your, your form of government. Select boards, I'm getting away off topic. This sets up whether you have a, we are going to have to do a charter thing soon. If we want to go to a town managed form of government, we don't, we have to do.
We'd like to have, we'd like to have a select board rule the town.
That'd be another debate.
Not have to.
Can you give us a section in that you're referring to?
Not right now. It's sometimes. We have to keep going. Oh, on the, on the community center, I just wanted to bring up she's got a bee problem and I don't know what we could do about it other than what she's been trying.
The stupid needs to be ripped up and the bees need to be removed.
Yes.
Actually, because it's a town and applications that potentially has this material. You probably should hire like water and pest or one of those.
One pest.
Not a pest, yeah. I've had grid like the modern, but there are a couple other ones too.
Are they still servicing this building?
Yes.
Okay. Any update on broadband or not? I just put it in there.
The update is that the, I'm working on the
Oh, yeah.
whole inventory and we're going to have details from Matrix tomorrow about when they'll be able to have that to us. Hopefully in time for the November meetings, the November elections.
We should start seeing Matrix trucks in town. Uh, we should start seeing Matrix trucks in town and that's what they're gonna be doing is locating all the hope.
Also, I just wanted, just like Mission Broadband, we, you approve the proposal. Matrix is the same way. This is just the fifty-six thousand. Was just a proposal which you approved, so I don't actually pay anything until they send me the specific invoices.
Do you, do you have a purchase policy in place?
Yep.
Okay.
Anything over a thousand requires a, a bid.
Okay, is it compliant with federal standards?
Uh, as far as I know, because it passes the FEMA, which is the federal branching, passes their requirements.
Okay.
Going on to the new website. Carl's been working on that.
Yeah, it's, uh, ready to go live. It's up to, uh.
Jumped over the transfer station.
What's up?
You jumped over the transfer.
Oh geez, thanks. Uh, transfer station.
Thank you for your, uh, response back to the.
What's that? You sent an email to me? I didn't see.
She sent it to you and to Megan Gouger. We had a resident of the town of Melbourne in the transfer station last, uh, two Sat, uh, Sundays ago.
At night? It seems to be busy.
And I am saying if it's good for one person, it's good for all.
No, it's not good for anybody.
Well, if it's good for one person to get arrested, then the other person should get arrested.
Did that person get arrested, are you saying?
First one, you told us both, the meeting two weeks ago, you said got arrested or served.
No, no, no. No, no one got served.
Uh, I'm pretty sure that you said the state police were called and they were being dealt with.
No, with, they had, we took a picture, or someone took a picture, Megan took a picture of them licensed, like, and. Uh, she called, uh, she called somebody and got who that person was, and I don't know that. Anything, other than that, I don't know anything about it. I don't know if in, any enforcement was done or anything.
I don't know, cause I thought it was reported here that somebody had called the. I thought they said they were from Waterville, like.
They, I think Megan checked with a relative that was a game warden and, yeah, I don't know. I'd have to check with Megan.
Actually, I think a town official can call the state police and get.
I could, yeah.
Well, you don't have to do that, because I know who the person is, and she would be pretty disappointed. Where someone came knocking on her door to, uh, let her know that she was breaking off.
What, so what do they want? Metal?
She was all in vice for.
That's all, like something they could have gotten when it's open.
But they were looking inside of all bins of, while she was in there, so.
It's liability issue, I think.
Yeah.
She often actually said something to her.
I'd like to get cameras in there, but is it worth?
Is, is it worth it when we get sued because somebody fell in a dumpster?
Yeah, I know.
Or got hurt when they're in the pile or.
What's the liability?
If it's good for one, it's good for another.
Right.
You've gotta, you've gotta take the action on somebody else taking it on one.
I guess so.
You sent them a write? You sent an email? And I get a response back from, I get a response back from Megan that says we can't have her.
You did send it to me? Oh, now I get it. No? You sure you got my email?
It's the one I sent pictures of.
Uh, what are we on?
Uh, transfer station update.
Oh, what transfer station? She got the Shepherd's Hoof. Extra bin, yeah, if she hasn't received it, she should be getting it very soon. And that's all I had on that. But I guess we're gonna have to put in, uh, looking into either a camera system or something like that.
Okay, okay, the next one is the, uh, new website and it's ready to go. Request was put in to revise last Thursday to go live and, uh, I am waiting for them to. Do so, essentially give us the, uh, details for doing the, uh, the DNS changes and, uh. Scott is ready to help with that, so the content has moved over. I'm hopeful that it goes live tomorrow or Wednesday.
Good.
Good. Could you put on the website the policies, procedures and a lot of bits and pieces? I don't know, I don't know if you were considering that.
Yeah, we wanna get the maps, we want to get the ordinances, we wanna get all that kind of stuff. Yeah, so, yeah, we're trying to get, we'll, we'll try to eventually get as much as, as we can.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, all the, uh, anything that was on the old website is moved over. Anything in the government categories. That was, uh, on the old website is now moved over and available.
It is available now?
It, well, once we go live, yes.
Hopefully early this week.
Right.
I know, but maybe so, same website.
Yep, yep.
Get a copy of the ordinance book.
Copy of the ordinances?
Yep.
Those are on the website.
But yeah, I need a book that I'm gonna be on the planning board, so. You wanna have coffee, right?
Yeah. And, um, I'll let you know when the course comes up for MMA has a course on planning boards. I'll let you know when it's come up. I'm gonna skip, um, fees and let, um, Anna talk about. The, uh, Blake Hill Bridge.
Yeah, just a, a little update, um, so folks might remember that in the, um, early spring. Late winter, we had some engineering work done so that we could get some estimates, um, so that it could go. On the warrant, um, back at our town meeting in June. Um, and then it was at the town meeting and the town voted, um, on that article and it passed. So the next step is that, um, similar to the, the, um. Golf cart sort of crossing, what DOT needs is a letter saying the town did vote to support the article. Um, and we'd like, um, that work to be done, so, um, I drafted that letter and. Um, if the board so votes tonight, we can send it off to the DOT and that's what will enable them to work. The bridge into their work plans. Um, so, um, moving forward nicely and we'll hear more in the fall about what their. Um, timeline is looking like. Um, so I guess I would motion that I send that letter to the DOT.
Move that, uh, we send the letter drafted by Anna Libby to the, uh. DOT, giving our, um. Information on the, what we have done. From the town on Lake Hill Bridge.
Also for the motion.
Vote.
Great, I'll send that off, thank you.
Uh, let me add something to that. Uh, I talked with Steve Cole. Uh, he's the, uh, mid-post, uh, he's basically the, our tech. He's the one that we, uh, zoomed with, uh, a few minute, uh, well, months ago, I guess it was. Um, he's pretty much the guy that's gonna be our direct, uh, uh, contact. He threw a monkey wrench into this whole thing, and I don't know that, Anna, you even know about this. He basically said that we're not on the schedule. And the state has not decided on whether or not. The bridge is gonna be built by the town or by the state. They haven't relinquished the, uh, bridge to the town as of yet. They haven't put it on the schedule and he, he envisioned it as something. That won't be on, it will, it definitely won't be on the two thousand and twenty-three schedule, because that has already been set. So it will probably be on the two thousand and twenty-four schedule.
When they were in here in that meeting, they said four years.
Yep. And I, I told him that, that just blows everything out of the water for us. Because we have spent fifty thousand dollars on engineering. And, uh, we were moving along on the assumption that we were gonna build, building the, the bridge. And they would supervise it, and we had it, uh, the bridge all designed. And we had sent the design to them and they said that that was good. Because that showed that the town had a commitment towards the bridge. And we'll use that as moving forward, now they know. That if they build the bridge, it's gonna be probably double what we would do is we build the bridge. And.
Can I, can I add something in, Bob?
Yep.
Um, I did ask Steve when I spoke to him specifically about, um, the pricing and if. Um, you know, waiting would mean that we hadn't, um, allocated enough funds. Um, but his feeling when I spoke to him was that, um. That should probably cover it with the state building it.
If the state build it, we, we have, we have, uh. We haven't raised enough, we, what we allotted was enough money to, to, to go ahead, really? The two hundred and sixty thousand would, would do it?
That's what he said, and I mean, unless something goes crazy, I mean, who can predict the future, but, um, that was his feeling.
Yeah, cause the prices in, in three years is gonna be quite a bit different than they are today.
How does that fit in with the letter that remember Paul Crockett went back and got them to verify that they. They would be, be responsible for a certain percentage.
Sixty percent.
And we're. Yeah.
I think it's in the contract.
Yeah, cause he got that in writing, so forty percent. Lose the, how we got the two sixty.
Yeah.
But now if the state builds it, they're saying it's gonna be a lot more than what we had figured on, so our forty percent would be a lot more.
Yeah, I know.
Steve, Steve told me.
Yeah, it's completely different than what we've come up with and, yeah, in three years, what, the price of steel and. It's, it's, I don't know.
Steve, uh, Steve did tell me I am. I asked specifically if that would be enough, and he did feel like it would be a reasonable estimate.
He also said that the bridge is not being torn out at this point. So he said that the bridge won't be taken out until it's definitely gonna be rebuilt, so. The fear of removing the bridge and us not being able to cross is not, is not there.
But we still can't do anything to the deck of it, and the holes are getting worse, so even if they don't take it out, it's gonna be unusable.
He said the only step they've taken is the ten-ton limit and that's as far as they will go.
You just gotta keep on their back and let them know it's a hazard, uh, it's a fire issue, it's a rescue. You know, for the town to try to push them along.
And that's what Steve said, was, keep calling me and keep pushing and.
At this point, it's a pedestrian issue too. You've seen the holes, yeah.
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 So this is the second time the state's done this to us in the last twenty years.
Well, it's, it's the third time, because the same, I was just gonna say the same thing is happening on guns. So Steve is, is the same guy doing that and they're, they're gonna supply the material. And we have to do the.
Do the work.
Work, but.
Give them a bill.
You know, I, I did, I, I called him and asked for the, the drawings. If we can see the drawings and we know what we have to do to, to do it, so.
Well, yeah, you're doing all the work and then get, they get a yard full of catch patients. This, this is what I said. Get it done and just, you know, say, we're doing the work, all you gotta do is fly that green, green back for us, so, you know.
Yeah, as long as I have the design, we can go from there.
When you first started talking about this bridge project, I told you to do the same exact thing that we did over there, let them tear it out. They come in here tomorrow, they tear it out, next week you have a crew in there putting in a pre-tem concrete bridge, just like we did on Locks Corner. It costs us fifty thousand dollars, you put two hundred and ten thousand dollars back into the coffins, into the town of Melbourne. Everybody gets a little bit of a tax break this year.
What can I say?
Get the state out of your back pocket. Take a flying jump.
Okay, um, carry, carry inlapsed accounts, are we gonna do that like next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Making a list of what we should do with the ordinance review committee this year. Uh, the first thing is, uh, dog ordinance, they should update that. And the, uh, ordinance, uh, the land use ordinance, the yellow one, the orange one. Uh, needs to be updated. It either needs to be retyped, which Alice already did, or the orange one needs to be updated. So, we make, we need to make it, Anna, do you know what I'm talking about?
The, the one with like the tables that are missing the. Column, that one?
Right, we made that correction at the town meeting.
Okay.
We made some correct, uh, added some things to the ordinance and we made some correct. Um, but the orange one also needs some corrections from years past. So we need to catch up on that. So we either take the, the orange one and change all, make all those changes or. We take the one that Alice did and make those changes. So we, we've gotta a, at least have someone from the ordinance review committee come in. And make that decision. Sooner rather than later.
Doesn't involve the overlapping ordinances, like Ethan Macan.
Right. So, I, I like the one that Alice did, because it has a numbering system. But the ordinance review committee likes it the other way, so we'll have to rehash that some.
Yeah, I think planning board and.
They all like Alice's way.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think the planning board and, and Bill Butler and some other committees really like the numbering system, so maybe it's.
Cause you're gonna flip it too, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
As far as referencing, but if somebody's really used to the old version and layout, then I can understand that.
Right.
So.
Another thing I wanted to bring up was, uh, should we look for a cooling or, or a heating? Center for town? Say like the community center be an actual. Heating center. And that would have to entail Mike Whistle. And maybe he can steer us in the right way.
Yeah, do you want me to send him a note, Bob, and?
Yeah.
See if he has a suggestion. Okay, I'll reach out.
You talking about a warming standard during crisis?
Yeah, during a crisis.
I thought the elementary school used to be a place to go.
Yeah, they don't have a generator though, and the community center will have one soon. When taxes start coming in. Um, and we didn't have a swim. Program this summer, did we? That I know of. Okay.
No, and it would be. Oh, sorry, go ahead, Bob.
Uh, someone called me this week, uh, last week and said that. Uh, she has a daughter that would like to get trained for uh. Giving lessons. Uh, take that course and she would take it at U M F. And I said that we probably would be able to pay for that training. If they commit to doing the lessons at next summer. And I'd like to hear what you guys say. Uh, I think it was about three hundred for the course at U M F.
I I don't think I've been around where we've had an active swim program because COVID came along, but.
Right.
As far as. I think we always got. Instructors through Y M C A.
Right.
So if you don't get an instructor through the Y M C A, I wonder about the the liability insurance issues. Yeah, if we're just hiring a person versus somebody coming through the Y M C A.
I'll check that.
Sorry.
The Y M C's not been able to supply a lifeguard for us for the last.
Right, so she might be able to join the why. When she when she gets the thing.
That certification along with the backup.
Right.
Of Y M C A makes a big difference for insurance.
I'll check on that.
We should get her as far as.
Right.
That's what's happening is they scarf them up for other towns.
Right. But I'll get her. Yeah, I'll get that sort of commission.
I would want a contract.
Yeah.
I wouldn't just pay three hundred bucks and then.
Right.
Get her.
It's well, similar like Rescue, they they have them take their courses and then if they join Rescue, then. The only other thing I have is the review's fee schedule. If you wanted to start doing that, or you have other things to bring up.
I don't.
You don't?
What is this?
Oh, it's a B, it's a B's.
Oh, the B's.
Anything about the property tax exemption stuff?
Uh, this is the last meeting.
No, the stuff that Heather just gave you.
Can I get a copy of the FOIA request? One of them's.
Okay.
Termination. Sorry about that.
Okay, fee schedule. Do you get?
I got a copy.
You don't have it. Okay, this is the one that's in the in the orange book. We have that to find. I want to like me and copy. I should ask Alice.
I've got one at my house.
Yeah. Uh, Anna, do you have the fee schedule?
Yeah, the the draft new.
Yeah.
One. Yes, I'm looking right now.
He didn't make. What I have is what Bill sent to us. As a recommendation for increasing increasing, and I have a copy of what's in the in the ordinance right now. So. Um, the first one is administrative and variance appeals. They were seventy-five dollars. And seventy oh point.
No.
Oh, seven cents a square foot?
No, I think that's different than.
Well, that's more.
Yeah.
Oh, I see. Yes, seventy-five dollars. Okay, seventy-five dollars in what? Okay, yeah, I'm reading these.
It's now a hundred and twenty-five dollars plus.
Hundred and twenty-five. Okay, that's right. So that's fifty fifty-dollar increase, right?
Well, it but it's plus cost, which is actually more than fifty dollars.
Plus cost. And we should see that more often.
Right.
Because if they're putting out a lot of.
Better notices.
Yes, and mailings and stuff like that. Yeah, cuz if you, yeah, butter notices could be like five, six, seven different butters.
Yeah, yeah.
Those.
It's.
Those add up quick.
Fifty dollars. I was eating that, but I was on the appeal speed, but. It's definitely a real cost.
Yeah, planning boards don't require certified notices, do they? But appeals do.
Planning boards do.
I think they do.
Yeah.
Also.
Oh, yeah.
So certified notices to all we have letters.
Yeah. Maybe twice. No, just once, I think.
Yeah.
I don't know about the planning.
So. Would it make sense to do, here's the fee, and then based on the number of butters?
Well, that's what it would be. That's that was is what plus cost would mean.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I see what you mean. Make it more.
Make it more clear about why.
Yes, so the hundred and twenty-five dollars frankly is what it's gonna cost to to advertise in the K J period.
Yeah.
So and that may be something that needs to be adjusted. I don't know if K J is still a hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Well, a hundred and twenty-five is is basically to cover. Bill, the CEO.
Then it needs to be a lot more than that.
Yeah. Yeah, it is.
The plus costs.
Cuz we were.
Butters. Okay, I see what you mean. See, that's what if we don't put, what if we say cost? Plus cost. And don't say for butters.
How about? Legal notifications and then that covers your advertising and.
But it's up. Oh, so plus the the advertising is a plus cost.
Yeah. That would make sense.
I think you wanna. The problem is with the. The. Yeah, my experience with Bill's. Cost is that he is probably gonna be needed for two meetings.
Yep.
And however long those meetings last, which is usually hour and a half, two hours each, and there may be a site visit, so there may be. Travel costs or mileage.
He's over twenty-five bucks an hour.
Yeah.
Thirty-four, forty-one.
Thirty-four dollars an hour, so.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. If you, if we were not required to do advertising the K J, that changes the picture, but still, if you wanna capture. Uh, Bill's costs, that's something we haven't done in the past.
Yeah.
Yeah, my memory of this draft is that um. But we were hoping to cover some more of those costs, but it wasn't. Gonna cover all of like. Bill's time. You know, staff time. In these estimates, cuz I think that.
Most of it, though. No, we should cover most of it cuz that's. You know, those are the people that are drawing the money. From Bill's time. Right, I see what you mean. Right, because Bill is getting paid also from the town account. But I think. I think these these costs should.
Additional.
Yeah, I would I would say like five hundred.
I don't know if it needs to be that high, but I don't know.
But not.
How much time Bill spends on it.
I wouldn't put. Plus cost, I'd just say five hundred.
See, I'm more more towards, sorry, I'm more towards putting plus cost because those costs change. We're not limiting ourselves. Like, I hate the fact that we've put in a specific dollar amount for mileage reimbursement.
Right.
It should be tied to some index.
Right.
But. It makes sense.
I I'm reluctant to put it at five hundred dollars cuz you're going to have, you're gonna prevent people from doing. Asking for an appeal. I mean, most of them are, you know.
These are appeals.
Yes.
Oh.
I I like the the idea of a plus cost that it gives you the. The bandwidth to cover certified mailings and. Um, advertising as it goes up or down or changes.
I can see going up to two twenty-five or two fifty. Plus cost.
Plus cost. No, not seeing butters.
Yeah.
Two fifty. How do you say?
And actually, just to keep it. Keep it clear, transparent, could we say plus cost of notifications, which covers the advertising and certified mailings?
Yep.
That one makes sense.
Okay.
Does that put us? I'm wondering if that number puts us way out of alignment with neighboring towns.
I don't know. I think we could go to the website and find out, right?
We should be able to.
Yeah. Yeah, we could check that. My, well, I think works over in Belgrade.
And Row.
Uh, mobile home. Placement and attach. Structures seventy-five cents. So what do he do?
It's actually seven point five cents.
Okay, so he went up to ten cents. Square foot. So he was that. So that's quite a bit more.
No, that's not that much more.
Hundred dollars minimum.
Yeah.
Wow.
I mean, this is, that's only.
That's not.
Five cents more to get up to ten cents, but the minimum is.
Yeah.
Tigger.
Yeah.
But is that that should cover more of Bill's costs too?
Right, right.
So remember, we don't charge for a lot of things that Bill has to do too, like looking at and looking at potential. Questions about.
True, yeah.
We're never gonna cover all of his costs.
Uh, unattached accessory structures, ten bucks. One hundred to two hundred square foot area.
Should we have Bill here for this conversation?
I wouldn't pay that much, though. Get him in here.
We could have him zoom in.
You want him to do, you wanna do that? I could get him to zoom.
Cuz I I think he is familiar with the fees and some of.
No, I think that's what he said in one of the.
Wanna do that?
Previous communications.
I just saw.
Right. One time ago, I was on the appeals board and also as treasurer, I had some specific. Worries about this, so, sorry.
No, I I I don't wanna make it so expensive that people can't do things either.
Exactly, cuz you don't want them trying to circumvent.
Right, right. But.
I won't get.
I I can see the cost. It's not getting covered. And I saw. Alice was working a heck of a lot of those hours on planning board. And those weren't getting covered, so.
But then that's too goes back to some of the, we have to think about the divisions because. How much of the assistant's time should be going to the planning board?
Right.
And. You know, make it very clear about who does the notices.
It's gonna be limits.
Yeah, it, the planning board. Back in my day, when I was on the appeals board, we had to send out, we did our own notices.
Yeah, I'd like to propose that each of the boards, each of the committees do their own meeting minutes.
Yeah.
Actually, isn't that a requirement that the committees have to file meeting minutes with the selectmen's office because they're town?
They never do, but. I always, I sure they, I sure they have minutes, but.
It's supposed to be found here for especially planning and appeals boards.
By the Bible, since. I don't know. So I just wanna make sure we get that add in the new website for, and Anna wasn't here for that. For the minute, as Alice's job.
Yeah.
So if we can get that advertised, maybe we can get some interest going.
Okay.
Uh, you have an updated job description or anything too?
Yep, I gave that to. Yeah, it's from the. It's all written right out, pretty clear, but Anna mentioned that same thing. We we know thirty hours, no, we should be able to will it down to twenty hours a week.
Right.
And. Uh, how much on a planning board too?
Yeah, clear expectations of what.
Right.
What time, where.
Right.
So.
So. Right.
Do you think it needs to be twenty hours?
It, well, we'll say um. When she did the the retyping of the ordinance, that took a long time.
Yeah, sure, that was, that's like a.
Going any further into that. But. You know, that was a lot of work and it's too bad if we don't use it, it'll get wasted, wasted hours, so.
But that that can happen with any job. We can always.
Yeah.
I can clean my house or I can clean my house. It, there has to be some oversight of where the parameters are.
Right.
I guess, you know, I don't, who, where did that request come from? Was some, did somebody ask that that document be rewritten?
Yes.
So was it the planning board?
I don't know where it came from. It did. And the other thing was I didn't realize that a copy of the orange one is on the computer. I didn't know that. I was on the assumption that the only thing that was in the computer was that one that was rewritten by. And that's why I I went through that whole thing word by word to make sure that the one that was rewritten. Was good.
Yeah.
That was a waste of time. Well, maybe.
Wait, well, there were, there were, it was interesting to watch the whole thing because there was. Um, one admin assistant did a whole bunch of things and their computer that they were using, which actually I think was that one. Was very limited as to.
Yeah.
A lot of things. So they were using their personal laptop. And so that all got transferred when they, when they left. But I don't think that transferred consistently. So that the next admin assistant, and there've been several, that came in, didn't have access to all of it, and then some of it got over there, not all of it. And so there was kind of a a loss of continuity of data.
Yeah.
So that that was really too bad, which goes back to why I think. At least by the time we get a new admin assistant, we need to have a town. At least by the time we get a new admin assistant, we need to have a town hall. Q and A and quick overview class of three sixty-five of how to use it, so we're all doing the same.
That's true.
Yeah, that would help me, that's for sure.
And, you know, I think it's really important to have all of us take it together, so we we get the same message. And we can ask questions that all of us hear, so that we're all focused in the same way.
Yep.
All of our documents that are created should be done through Office three sixty-five. And it should, I mean, you can make a copy for your local machine if you chose to, but I guess, but. It should be on the town, uh, infrastructure, so that it's available to everybody.
Right, and it's like.
In the town, in in the committee.
Yeah, but in order to do that. So that it's actually usable, we need to to all have the same structure in mind of how we file things, cause you can just dump things. And nobody will ever find it, which was what happened to the transfers between different computers for admin assistants. The the other thing is, that's really cool, Scott Herrick has made it so we can scan an email.
Yeah.
You see that?
Yeah.
That is so cool, but you can also get fancy and scan an email directly to somebody. But I think we should have as a procedure, this is my personal thing, but have as a procedure that we always. Scan email to ourselves, so we have a record of what we're sending out.
Yeah.
Versus me scanning something and sending it to FEMA.
I usually do.
So.
Yeah.
You know, as a process, we need to say, no, you scan something to yourself and then you email it.
Yeah.
So. Sorry.
Yeah, but that was a big help for me.
Oh, it's really cool. Yes.
Anything else, Anna? Well, we went through here, they must have been tired tonight, they they took off, there's no one else here.
Oh, really?
Yeah. I've got.
No, I didn't have anything else on my list.
I have one other thing, but it would require us to go in executive session. And I really would like to do it, I didn't, and I don't remember the, the state. Things to do it.
Right, you're still online.
Yeah, we'd have to go off.
Don't lose the end when you do it.
What's that, don't lose.
Don't lose the end when you go offline.
Yeah, how do we do that and not lose Anna though? How do we do it and not lose Anna? You'd have to set up a. I guess we won't be able to.
We could. Yeah, do, does one of you have access to Zoom, cause we could just get off this meeting and then I'm on my email, so you can mail me the new. Link if you want, Carl.
Yeah, I think we should.
Okay. Or we should be motion to adjourn.
Motion to go into executive session for section.
Okay.
All right, I'll wait for your Zoom link, okay, Carl?
Right, sound good.
Okay, talk to y'all in a minute.